I'll keep an eye on attendees for anyone who wants to come over. And I'm gonna bring John Hall over. I'm hearing a delay in the room. It's a long delay.
Hey Eric, this is Lucas Mahary. Just trying to see if you can hear me alright?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello Eric, this is Susan. Am I going to be able to share a screen when it comes to me that time?
I believe so. Let me see. I don't. Yeah. Before I start the meeting, I wanna kill whatever. I think it's the recording on the other computer.
The other computer.
It's got like a seven second delay.
Yeah, that sounds really terrible.
Yeah, we need to fix that. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I need to fix that. Give me a second, folks. It's coming out of here or up there? And I'm still not hearing it in my headphones. So I'm happy to use the laptop alone and kill the other stuff. And it's a long gap. It's like the broadcasting. Alright, we're gonna work on it. We'll give that a minute. We'll see. We get back to where we belong. Check.
Check.
Yeah, I only hear it here.
Yeah, I only hear it here.
And with a delay.
I hear it. The delay.
Yeah, yep.
I don't think so. Is that the mute? So, it's not muted. What is this? Test one. Test one. Do people hear me? If so, just raise a hand. Alright. Okay. Let me try that. Hello? Test one.
Hey, you are kinda low though. I can't hardly hear you.
Yeah, I'm talking quiet right now because we're not sure where it's coming from.
Okay.
You're nice and loud Samantha, I appreciate it.
Eric, when it was echoing, it looked like it was coming from Lucas.
Yeah, that's possible.
I just muted myself. Does it go away if I, in a second, I'll hit mute again?
I haven't heard it since we switched. Are you guys still hearing the echo? Nope, it's good. I think we're good. I'm not hearing me here, but I can hear me just fine enough. Yep. Alright. Well, it's 6:02 and it looks like we've got ourselves straightened out here. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Environment and Land Use Committee Study Session. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Summers.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Thorzland.
Here.
Walken. Carter.
Here.
Coort. Esri.
Here.
Fortato.
Here.
Goss. Harper. King.
Here.
Lockshin.
Here.
McGuire.
Here.
Michaels.
Here.
Pasalakwa. Paul.
I see Jacob.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought I saw him.
I'm back. Did it work now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Rodriguez. Store.
Present.
Straub.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
Alright, very good. I wanna thank everyone who's taken the time out of their evening to come here for this. We will try to keep it short, meaning under two hours or at two hours or so. So that's a goal. We'll see if we can hit it. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Esri.
Thank you, Erin. A second. And a second, Jennifer, would the clerk call the roll?
Summers.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thorzland.
Yes.
Walken's on it here. Carter.
Yes.
Esri.
Yes.
Fortato.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Lockshin.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Pasalakwa's not here yet. Paul. Paul. Said a yes.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm sorry. Yes.
Store.
Present, yes.
Straub.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much. That passed. I have two people in attendees right now. And Chris Hausman and Kathy Larson. If you're interested in speaking in public participation, give me a hand raise there, either one of you. I don't see anything. I'm gonna ask Chris. Chris, would you like to talk in public participation?
Not at this point. I would just be able to respond of questions after Lucas makes his presentation. So I'm good at this point, Eric.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Kathy, are you interested in public participation at this point, or are you listening?
I'm just listening only. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we're gonna go back to that. Seeing none for public participation, I'm gonna close that now. Thank you very much for those who were listening in. Item five is communications. Do any of the members of the board have a communication? If so, you can raise your hand or wave. I saw Diane first.
Sorry, thank you. I just wanted to send regrets. Steve Thomas was unable to get done with his job in time to be here tonight. He's the mayor of Lobo.
Okay, thank you Diane for that. Relay Kyle, I think you were next. Didn't raise your hand? Okay. Anyone else? Either give me a wave or use the raise hand button. Steve, does the kitten wanna talk? Okay, very good. Alright, we can move right into presentations. Again, what I'd like to do here is if you wanna screen share, let me know. I know that Posodom has given Mary their PowerPoint to present from her office. She's here over in her space right now. I think we have a few people here for the City of Champagne. Let's start with, I believe TJ is here.
I am here. And I do have a couple of slides. Is it possible for me to share?
Yeah, I believe so. I do. Let me see.
It looks like I've got that ability. So let me pull that up real quick. Thank you.
And again, for everybody, any presentations you have, I'd like you to email those to us so that we can put them together in a package later. That would be Megan's email. And if everyone has their pen ready, I will give you Megan's email right now before we start. That's M. Robinson or M.R.O.B.I.S.O.N. at C.O. dot champagne dot Illinois. And if anyone has a question about that email later, just yell and I'll read it again. Alright, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. Real quick, are you seeing just the one slide or are you seeing the presentation side of things?
We're seeing the one slide now.
Okay, perfect. Alright, well, thank you so much. For those of you who I haven't had the pleasure to meet, my name is TJ Blakeman. I'm Senior Planner for Economic Development with the City of Champagne. And I wanna thank you so much for offering us the platform to come and talk to you tonight about a very ambitious and exciting project, one that has certainly been long in the making. And that is making the improvements to the Garden Hills neighborhood, primarily to solve many of the flooding issues that are happening, but also trying to address a number of other needs of the neighborhood. So this has been a process that we've been working on for a long time. There's been a lot of good public input on this topic. We have been looking at ways to try to bring this project forward in our capital improvement plan. In last year's plan, it was slated that this work wasn't going to be able to happen until around 2030. Certainly, the neighborhood has asked us to try to accelerate that. And recently, council has found ways to move this forward. And so what I wanna describe to you today is I've got just some brief slides. I was told to keep it very brief. I know you have a full agenda. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of details about the project and perhaps there's ways that our goals and your goals can align to help bring relief to the neighborhood and really transform and stabilize the neighborhood. So real quickly, some background information. Garden Hills was first built in the 1950s. The first homes went in in 1955. It was built outside of the City of Champagne corporate limits. So it was built in the county. And then the city came along and annexed as different phases were completed. Like most post-war subdivisions, developers were striving for affordability. They wanted starter homes. The community was under a ton of pressure to provide housing for those moving to the community for the GI Bill. So many of the homes, you see the sale ad up there. It's it's advertising for the family home, the starter home in the 1955 Ilio. The subdivision was built before anyone had developed real subdivision standards. Subdivisions were kind of a new concept. The core of the city had been developed for about 30 years. So this was new to see this kind of rapid growth on the edge. And so neither the county nor the city were totally prepared for it. And many of the subdivisions that were built on our fringe were developed with substandard drainage and other, what we consider today, very standard city services. On the right, you see an evolution map showing the buildout of the subdivision and then the subsequent annexations and how those were piecemealed over time. Overall, Garden Hills is one of the city's largest subdivisions, 1,604 residential structures. Most people look at it as being north and south of the railroad tracks. There are certainly different characteristics, ownership patterns between both. But it together makes up a very large neighborhood, especially in the northwest quadrant of the city. And there's just a couple of pictures, obviously. Recurring flooding along many streets is a regular sign. When the flooding is not occurring, you see some just some street views there. Again, no curb and gutter, asphalt streets. There is no streetlights and no, no large scale stormwater system throughout the neighborhood. So we are preparing to change that. This would follow in the wake of many of our other very successful stormwater projects we've undertaken. You see there on the lower right, the West Washington Basin at Glen Park is our most recent. That was solving a number of flooding issues in the West Washington neighborhood. Again, post-war housing developed kind of under the exact same situation as Garden Hills. So we have, we are planning to first build a new stormwater detention basin along Hedge Road. We have acquired all of the houses and raised all of the houses to do so. And that's the first phase. The second phase is construction of that basin. You see some renderings there of what that'll look like. It'll add park-like amenities, just like our other basins have done. And then Phase Three would be many of the large interceptors that are needed to connect some of the heaviest flooding, flood-prone areas to that basin to actually relieve some of the stormwater, especially north of the railroad tracks. So what council's authorized us to do, we found ways to move this up through a series of different funding solutions. And so here are the cost estimates as they stand right now. Again, Phase One is complete, $5 million to purchase the homes, to raise the homes, prepare the site. Phase Two, $22.7 million. We expect design to start in 2022 and to be completed in 2025. And Phase Three, the interceptor's another 17 million. What is not included on this list at this time is Phases Four and Five. Phases Four and Five would be the complete reconstruction of nearly every street along with stormwater, curb and gutter in a complete buildout. And that would equal another $96.8 million as proposed. So there is plenty of need in this neighborhood besides what we were able to move up in our capital improvements plan. I have to throw this Boneyard Creek North branch into this total because it all goes into how much the city's preparing to bond, to issue debt on. So there is in process, under construction and under design, the Boneyard North Branch, which would extend the Boneyard north of University Avenue, all the way through many neighborhoods, including MLK, Bristol, Garwood, Beardsley, all the way up to Neal Street. We've already started that project, but there's more to be done. And so that will be included in the bonding package so that, just so you can see how the 74 million relates from the revenue and expenses. So we are planning to use 5 million of our $24 million ARP allocation. The rest is issuance of debt. And I'll talk just in a moment about how we plan to pay for that debt. But there you see 74.4 is the total issuance. There are two other projects that were Oh, I think I'm getting an echo here. Maybe Lorraine's mic perhaps.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. Lorraine, if you don't mind muting, if you want, I can mute you. And while we get you muted, I have two gentlemen that have come into the room.
Okay, so there are two additional projects that we have been able to move forward. And that is expanding our sleep program, which is our safety lighting energy efficiency program, which helps install yard lights, doorbell cameras, things like that, directly to the homeowner. And then we're looking at four to six million dollars in public street lighting to help, especially along some of our arterial streets around transit connections. So we were able to also move that up as well. There you just see some pictures we've taken with streets without lights and streets with yard lights, just to help illustrate the point. So the way we plan to pay for a chunk of this is through the creation of a new Garden Hills Tax Increment Financing District. This is the proposed area. It would be roughly bounded by Bloomington Road, Mattis Avenue, Bradley and Harris Street. It's rather large in size, 513 acres, but most residential tiffs tend to be larger in size. Between 2008 and 2018, this area outlined in the teal has experienced about a 14.8% decline in equalized assessed value, which is one of the key indicators we'll look at when creating that TIF district. That's, that's a sizable chunk that we're gonna attempt to try to stabilize, number one, through the, through the stormwater projects. And hopefully, if the TIF is successful and there's additional investment in the area, additional programming that can help target specific areas, specific types of projects across the Garden Hills neighborhood. However, to make this work, the money is needed in the early years. And so what we are planning to do, what we're planning to do is to transfer money from the North Mattis Avenue TIF, which is an existing TIF. You may remember this if you were on county board. Years ago, we created a North Mattis TIF district to remediate the abandoned factory at AC Humco and the Weir Co. Foundry. And for, to help provide assistance for the construction, to remediate the site, to prepare the site, to build the craft distribution warehouse. That TIF has been successful. The craft warehouse was built. The increment generated by that development and in that TIF is what allows us to transfer over money from that TIF to the Garden Hills TIF to provide those early years of debt finance, of debt payments, so that we were able to move the projects forward. So for the first, for the early years of the TIF, there would be transfers of money from the North Mattis Avenue TIF, which would mean that the industrial properties there were helping to stabilize the neighborhood and invest in the stormwater. And then hopefully, in the later years, we can continue to see economic investment across the neighborhood, which again allows us to create additional programs to target within the Garden Hills TIF itself. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with the concept of tax increment financing, I just wanted to throw this slide on as a final point. This is the chart I used when I tried to describe it. I won't go too in-depth. If you have questions about this, you certainly can ask. But tax increment financing works by going into an area which typically is seeing disinvestment or declining values and creating a base. Once the TIF is enacted, that base is the same. So for the duration of the TIF, all the taxing districts from the city, the county, the MTD, Forest Preserve, all the way down the line, we would continue to collect the taxes generated within that neighborhood as they were on the day the TIF was created. Any additional investment that happens in the neighborhood, we are able to recapture that new growth into this special fund that the city administers on behalf of all the taxing districts. And we invest that money back in the neighborhood or back in the district. It has to be invested back in that district. Ideally, when the TIF then ends, we've stabilized the neighborhood, we've turned things around, the trends have been reversed, and each of the taxing districts sees benefit at the end of that time. So that in a nutshell is what council has authorized us to begin working on. We are also gonna be working on a planning process in the Garden Hills neighborhood that will help drive some of those questions about other needs in the neighborhood. But in general, from a capital standpoint, that is where we stand. There are certainly needs beyond what we're able to fund. And those, of course, continue to be pushed into the out years. But we have managed to make work using our 5 million of our ARP money, along with the, with the new Garden Hills TIF, to move the projects forward into what is a very needed situation. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know if you wanna reserve questions at the end. I'm not sure how you wanna handle that.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is I'm gonna let Samantha come in. Samantha has a unique position. She lives there. She's a rep and
I just had a quick question.
Yeah, well, before that Samantha, do you have anything to add to there in your own personal experience? As someone who's familiar with this and the project and the duration of it and what you folks have been trying to get done over there?
I sure do. Hi, my name is Samantha Carter. I've been born and raised in Champagne or Benet and a resident of District Six, Garden Hills, for eight years. I remember during my childhood, our church pastor and first lady would often invite our family to their home located in Garden Hills neighborhood, once considered a suburban neighborhood. I was in pure awe. The lawns and homes were so nice and well-kept. One year during the Christmas season, I remember my parents strolling through the streets to allow us kids to see all the nicely decorative homes. Well, today, I don't feel that same joy that I once felt when I was a little girl. Flooding has been a constant issue since moving into Garden Hills in 2013. Majority of the time, when rain falls, residents of Garden Hills have to find an alternative route to getting home due to the flooding streets. Drivers and walkers are often inconvenienced because a neighborhood with no sidewalks automatically forced walkers in the path of moving vehicles. City buses are often rerouted when floodwaters are too high to pass or drop off passengers. I've also witnessed walkers splashed on by cars. You know, that isn't a good sight. Because of excessive standing water after rainfall, throughout the years, the cities have, the city have failed the residents of District Six by not coming up with the resolution sooner. Mr. Bob is my 82-year-old neighbor and I often chat with him from time to time. Mr. Bob told me he has been a resident of Garden Hills since the 1970s. He said flooding has gotten worse year to year. He hopes to see the city's finalized plans for the water retention pond completed. But with the city's plans for completion dated 20, 30 years out, he knows his chances are slammed due to his age. You can also find Mr. Bob out during rainfalls, riding his bike and cleaning street drains located on Bradley, Mattis and Hedge Road. Majority of the homes in District Six sit on concrete foundations. Over time, water can seep into concrete and ultimately break down concrete foundations, causing cracks and foundations to shift. I've seen many constituent, constituent homes inside, including my own, with interior cracks in the drywalls, which is an indicator that the foundation is shifting. Standing water after rainfall is also a public health risk, especially to pregnant women. Mosquitoes are known to carry the West Nile and Zika virus, which has, which has been documented to cause pregnant women's birth defects, microcephaly, a birth defect where the children's heads, it's smaller than normal and may not develop properly. Standing water is the perfect breeding environment for mosquitoes to lay their eggs. Residents often avoid sitting outside because of the excessive amount of mosquitoes presented during the summer months. The City of Champagne has committed millions towards the drainage, the drainage issue. And if possible, I would like the matching funds from the ARPA funds. I would like for the county to match funds from the ARPA funds, so we can help speed up this way overdue project that needs attention now. So I was just wondering, Mr. Blakeman, has, would a TIF district been beneficial maybe 20 years ago to Garden Hills?
Well, probably not, because what's making this, this concept work is the North Mattis Avenue TIF and the success that it has seen. And so the 20 years ago, when the AC Humco plant was there, there was no major project like the craft warehouse to jumpstart revenue generation into a TIF. So from a TIF standpoint, no, because the investment wouldn't have likely been there to create the kind of revenue in the TIF needed in order to issue the debt needed for the, for the large project. Does that make, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Alright, thank you Samantha. And thank you TJ. Are there any questions from board members at this time? I see Stephanie.
Yeah, I have a few. So my first question, I'll just ask them all, because they're all for TJ. So the questions I have is, I listened to the study session on this that the, that the city did in its entirety after the fact, because we were also having a study session that day. And if I recall, I think that the actual dollar amount that was being discussed for the overall plan from your side of ARPA was more like in the 11 to 13 million dollar range, because there was another like five to eight million dollars, I think specifically for, maybe for lighting? Is that, or, or maybe to find out whether or not?
Yeah, the four to six million dollars for, so the five million dollars for Phase One from the, from ARPA is 5 million towards the stormwater. But there's the lighting project, which was estimated to be four to six million dollars. That also was a piece of that ARPA money. That's outside of the bonding. That was The other slide I showed.
And and then this is a question, and if you're one of our upcoming presenters, you could just. Assume I'm going to ask you this too. So just build it into your presentation for everybody after this one. Is what are y'all asking the county for? And do you know what I'm saying? So that's the question. I know that in listening to the study session that there was some consternation by some of the board members. That some elements of the overall project that they thought were pretty. Important were left out and. That they that left out, and I mean, like, so like, they're still twenty years down the road type of left out. And so there was some conversation about how can you move those up? Both within the the ARPA money that y'all have, but what so what what what's the ask?
Well, I didn't come here with a specific dollar amount to ask from you. I think that's something that I'm going to allow the county board to decide on. Like I mentioned. We are still, there is still ninety ninety-six point eight million dollars worth of needs. And I know that some council members talked about sidewalks. Especially around transit facilities, you know, you know. I doubt there's enough money between all of us to do sidewalks across the entire neighborhood. And I don't, I don't have a estimate for what it would cost to do sidewalks in my hand right now. But there could conceivably be some pieces that get moved forward should the county decide that that our goals and your goals align. I think we would probably want to have some conversations about what logically can be done. Given, you know, staff timing, physical, you know, the amount of money that was being offered. If the county board is looking to help provide funding support in the neighborhood. I certainly think the city of Champagne would welcome that and and look to have a conversation. To really understand where your interest lies in plugging into this project.
Um, I I would just speak from from my perspective. I think the water infrastructure is, I I think that's the most readily. Apparent allowable expense under ARPA. And so I think if the county was going to get involved, we'd only want to get involved in things that were clearly. That we're not going to have to make some kind of complicated case for, like. Water infrastructure is a clearly allowable expense, so we would frame our conversation on that.
Yeah, and that's a good example of where that that's exactly right. The the. Information coming from the Treasury Department has been a little complicated and a little convoluted about what is allowed, what isn't. So everything we've been proposing has been premised on. Being allowed to use those funds. That being said, you know, if county money went into the flooding portion. Perhaps that frees up Tiff money that doesn't have that restriction to do some other projects. My point being that. You know, it it really depends on what the county board's. Priorities are and and where your goals lie and and again, how they match up with with ours.
Okay, so everybody else who's gonna speak after this, just. Put that in your presentation, like, just go ahead and make that ask, because we need to know what that is to have a real conversation. And then.
Stephanie, I'm gonna let Samantha go now.
Oh, shoot, I really, okay, I have one more question.
Okay, well, if it's quick.
Um, just really quick, could you give me some clarity on when? I saw you had a quick slide up there. When did the city of Champagne incorporate Garden Hills?
So it was over time. It's the first annexation happened in nineteen fifty-eight. The final ones didn't happen until the eighties. So it it was over a thirty-year period, taking different chunks of Garden Hills.
Okay, Samantha, you had your hand up. Do you have a question still?
Yeah, um, I I've watched so many projects be completed before Garden Hills. It's like, to me. This is an underserved community that has been put on the back burner so many times, TJ. I really do feel like I I do believe that the five million is is too low. I think we should, we should have come up with at least a a bigger amount. Because of the fact that council spoke on the issue in two thousand and thirteen. And expressed interest in the storm water management plan. However, they didn't even take action until two thousand and nineteen. So it's like, what what is the holdup? Why do we keep on, you know, kicking the can down the road when we know? As of you just told me, which was a question. Thank you so much, Dr. Fertado, for asking when the city accumulated Garden Hills since nineteen eighty. Nineteen eighty TJ.
Yeah, I would. And I that's that's, uh, what I would say is that there's been a very long list. Of stormwater projects since the nineties that the city's engaged in, more than a hundred million towards Boneyard, West Washington. John Street watershed and certainly Garden Hills is no exception. It needs the work. There's no one's going to dispute that fact. Between, you know, there's only so much the city can borrow and support with its revenue streams. I like to think what we've done here is we've come up with a creative strategy to to really cut ten years off and and your your neighbor or your your friend. Your eighty-year-old friend, you know. Ideally, the basin will be done in twenty twenty-five. So I think he's going to be there at the ribbon cutting for that basin, no problem.
Okay, I have one quick question then. If you come up with an ask and we have money that we can direct towards this. Will that money make it happen faster than that? In particular, the water, like Stephanie says, water is what we we have a clear path with water. Can we speed it up if we help?
And that that was a question that that our council had as well, and I will share the somewhat the answer that Alex Naj, our our city engineer. Said, and it's mostly about. The time it takes to actually create a project of this scale. It does take. Two years of design time. There's a lot that goes into it when looking at such a large neighborhood to make sure it works. You know, are there ways and and council at the council meeting, we were trying to get creative in trying to build in. Incentives or encouragements in our request for proposals to the engineering firms to try to speed that process up. And I I do believe we will do what we can. But a project of this scale and magnitude, it certainly it takes time to start in twenty. To start in earnest in twenty twenty-two, which we're just a few months off of and being able to wrap up in twenty twenty-five. I trust our engineers when I say that's about as fast as we can get the project done and very much in line with our other stormwater projects that we've. Very successfully completed.
Okay, Jim, I'm going to give you one quick question. Jim McGuire.
And quick question.
Yep.
So you mentioned the time TJ. How are you anyway? I should say that first. Uh, thank you for coming. Obviously, I think Garden Hills is a very important issue. They're flooding all those things. I like understanding. How things actually work and and you mentioned the amount of time a project like this takes. And reading the minutes for this meeting that talked about the. Infrastructure for Garden Hills. We actually have a list of over two hundred and twenty-seven million dollars for. Drainage. Issues, including the fourth and fifth phase of Garden Hills. And those costs and as has been said. Most ninety million dollars worth of construction just in Garden Hills. I know back when the column started this process, everybody wondered. Whether it would ever be completed. Because of the flooding down the campus. The. State, the comments about. Now, what's and what's what's there in your plan? What is, what is the retention pond? Then the outlying. Storm sewers throughout. The north part of Garden Hills. And then also it includes. Streets and roads, obviously, because you're gonna do the damage, complete streets. Lights. Cameras.
What's your question, Jim?
I will get to that if I'm allowed to speak. I I think Stephanie was allowed to speak and ask more many questions. One of the, one of the statements in the in here, the financing discussion was. The use of the ARPA funds. And. And that they had to be obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and the projects must be completed. And spent by thirty-one twenty-six. And you felt like, you know, just a few of the phases would be able to fit into that or would be. You know, the scheduling wouldn't actually allow more than that. Or do you have back? Do you understand? I mean. You were part of that discussion. What other additional things will fit in that time schedule? I guess I'll ask another question because it's lazy. How are people reacting to the ring doorbells for cameras? I asked that question only because that might indicate a. Home where a video was taken. Of a crime. And obviously, people feel uncomfortable. Providing that kind of information. Would cameras on light poles work a bit a little better? Anyway, hopefully it makes sense. Gives a little background.
Yeah, to to your first question, what can fit into the the rather strict ARPA timeline is a. A very good question that, you know, it becomes a matter of staffing. You know, we only have a public work staff that's so big and those projects need, they require a ton of of work. So. You know, if if the county board wants to participate and they want to have a conversation with the city about helping, I think we would, I I'm certain we would. Welcome that conversation to the table. I can't speak for Public Works about how much more capacity they have for for specific projects. I won't. Do that. I won't say that tonight. The second question about the the ring doorbells. I don't, we haven't started that yet. There's, you know, we we have done some, I believe we've done some installation of some yard lights and things. I don't know what the response or what the reaction is going to be. I I I think that the neighborhood certainly wants better lighting. They they want the yard lights. I believe they do want the yard lights in terms of the ring doorbells. I I'm not. I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, okay. And that's kind of off our water topic a little bit, and I want to wrap up.
I'd like to. Talking about requesting funds. If you're gonna run this meeting and ignore everybody's comments and.
Can you knock it off tonight? Enough derailing.
Why are you running the meeting?
Uh, Jim, I'm running the meeting and I'm asking you to wrap this part up. We're gonna move on.
You know, I was finished. You wouldn't have decided to.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
I just want to say thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you TJ. Thank you Samantha. Some firsthand experiences that were also helpful. That's probably one of our bigger things. I'm going to take a one second pause because two gentlemen walked in during all that. We're out in the hall. Who I think are here for the meeting and I just want to real quick. Go see what they want and see if we have to set something up for them. All right, give me one sec.
While he's doing that, maybe he needs to answer this question. I'm just curious. I I'm a little unfamiliar with your concept. Will there be more questions from my portion later or is is that all you need from me tonight? Okay, I'm seeing some nodding heads. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for for offering us the chance to come and speak tonight.
All right, I apologize for that. A couple of gentlemen were told to come on down. Representing sort of generally drainage districts up by Ranool. So they're gonna listen into the meeting. And we'll see if they want to have something to say towards the end. But they're getting set up right now. So we're gonna move along to the Mohammed Aquifer mapping. And I think. Susan is here and Susan, you have a presentation. Do you want to share a screen?
Yes.
All right, you should be able to do that.
Eric, I stepped away for just a moment. Are you asking me to do my presentation now?
Yes, I am.
Okay, just a second.
Yeah, I apologize. I stepped away for a moment to see who was in here. All right, looks like you're getting set up. Okay, Susan, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. I. I shouldn't have stepped away. I just stepped away to get some tea and I thought I was going to be last. This is great. All right, just a moment.
Do you not have a copy of the agenda? It is on the webpage.
Okay, I really thought I was county facilities at the end, but this is fine. This is fantastic. Just a moment, I'll turn on my audio.
Well, hang on a second because you might be right. Actually, I have Mohammed Aquifer mopping, mapping.
Yeah.
And I was told that's what you were going to.
No, no, that's Mr., I saw another person attending, Mr. Steven Brown.
Okay, let's go to Steven then. Susan, I apologize. I got some. Information that I wasn't sure that you weren't on that, so.
That's quite all right. I'm gonna share my screen now.
Okay, we're gonna let Steven go for Mohammed Aquifer and to just let people know the Psoedum Consolidated Drainage District is next.
Okay, can y'all see my screen?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Steven.
Presentation mode. My name is Steven Brown. I'm the chief scientist at the Illinois State Geological Survey at the Prairie Research Institute. Thank you for the invitation here to describe to you. Three D geologic mapping of the Mohammed Aquifer. And particularly, it's using this technique that's. Not exactly new, but it's more recent, a more recent tool for for mapping geology called helicopter borne transient. Electromagnetic survey, or we call it HTM or HTEM. And in two thousand and eighteen, we published the document on the right side of the page, ISGS circular five ninety-four that. Laid out a plan for mapping the whole of the Mohammed Aquifer across east central Illinois. And I'll, I can provide that later and there's a link to that in my last last slide. But we held a workshop in two thousand and seventeen. To get stakeholder input and we described, you know, why we need to do this and what's different today about the techniques that we have then than in previous. Work that we've done. So the Mohammed Aquifer shown in green is the water supply for east central Illinois. And, you know, this map shows it's an underground water supply. The map shows a boundary. It shows the extent. And as much as we think we know a lot about this, there's still much that's uncertain. And anytime there's an issue that needs to be answered about a groundwater supply, whether the availability or the susceptibility to contamination. Water use, we're always faced with. Working to try to answer those questions, often without the information we need. So over the next couple of minutes, I'm going to describe what this technique looks like to give you a visual. At the understand exactly what we mean when we say mapping the underground in three D as if it's a MRI of the earth. And I'm going to provide on my last slide. The cost and and understanding of what it would do just to carve out the. Champagne County area of the Aquifer. So my first example I'm going to give on how this works is from a project that we did. In northeast Illinois to map the offshore sand on the Lake Michigan coast. And so on the left, it shows what this whole project looks like. There's a helicopter. And it suspends this apparatus beneath it and it flies about a hundred feet off the ground and crisscrosses the landscape. The middle image shows the green area where we flew the helicopter. There were ten to eleven flight lines from Kenosha, Wisconsin, all the way to the Indiana Illinois state line. And there's some callouts here that show what this looks like. Around Waukegan Harbor and here down around Chicago. And on the right, it actually shows the mapped helicopter flight lines. And in this case, it's it's there's space more closely than we would in Champagne County because of the particular problem we were trying to solve here. because of the particular problem we were trying to solve here. And so what this shows on the left, if you can see that this is part of northeast Illinois, kind of rotated around and tilted up on edge. And here's the Illinois Wisconsin state line here and this goes down to Indiana in the lower left. And it starts to show what we will call horizontal slices through the ground. And the different colors represent the material properties that this technique maps and they relate to the geology. And so they tell us something about sand and gravel and the bedrock and what's there. The very top one shows blue and that's actually the surface of Lake Michigan. And where you see Beach Park where it's yellow, that's where the helicopter flew over Illinois Beach State Park where there's sand. And it mapped it very nicely. So on the right then is what the outcome of this. It's an offshore map, geologic map that shows the distribution and thickness of sand, which is what our objective was. And I found this really quite profound and the resolution it gave us to look at this. This is the only example of doing this in the entire Great Lakes. We're the only ones who've ever done this like this in this application. And it's being used, the outcome is that this is being used to help us understand shoreline erosion, beach nourishment for all these communities up and down the lake shore, including the city of Chicago. The second example I want to show you what this looks like is from eastern Nebraska. So in the center of the left-hand image is Omaha, Nebraska. A little bit to the southwest is Lincoln. You can look up here at Sioux City. It gives you an idea of scale. All these different colored stripes are helicopter flight lines to collect the data. And if you could just look at the red ones here that crisscross along here all the way down to Omaha. And then look over to the right at the, at those same helicopter flight lines where they're showing slices through the earth and the different colors represent the geology. And so you can see here too, where they're closely spaced together, the resolution is a little bit higher because we can see more information. Now, what this map also shows is that the helicopter doesn't fly over urban areas. We don't fly over houses or structures or anywhere people are. And it's not because there's anything dangerous or that that apparatus does to people. It's in case there's an accident, the helicopter crashes. And so that's all planned out in a flight plan. I have one more example then of this project to illustrate then why this. We're going to zoom into this little square here in the middle of the left slide where the helicopter lines are spaced really closely together. And then tilted up on edge is this 3D view, the different colors, which are showing these electrical properties of the geologic materials are actually mapping out the geology in 3D. It is an MRI, so to speak, of the underground. And then that lets us understand then where water is, and this is the objective. In the case for the Mohammed Aquifer, what is the volume of water that's in the ground? How does it move through the ground? And what can we extract? And it leads to other things. Well, I know from our past experience that that first map I showed you will change. We'll find different boundaries. We'll find different layers. There will be things that we discovered that we don't know yet that are important for sustaining our water supply into the future. So my last slide here on this topic is showing Champaign County. And here's the question that you want me to answer. How, what is the, what are we asking? So our estimation is it would take $1.7 million to apply this kind of technique to Champaign County. It includes mapping with that helicopter technique. But also we have our own instruments that apply the same technique on the ground. So it includes some similar work on the ground doing that. It includes some drilling holes in the ground. That's something we do routinely. We've done a bit of that in the Mohammed Aquifer. But the Mohammed Aquifer is big. If you think about each bore hole that we drill is just one pin in the pin cushion, you can see how doing a project where we can cross the landscape fills in all those gaps. Just for some comparison, our estimate to do the whole aquifer is about $20 million. And we estimated that we could chunk this up into about seven areas and maybe get that done in five to seven or eight years. I think just focusing on Champaign County makes a project where it could be maybe two, three years to get it done with the upfront project of a number of days or weeks, probably not more than a month, though I don't want to, you know, be quoted on that for the helicopter time. But it is a lot of data. It takes quite a bit of effort to follow up and process all that. So the green area is the area of Mohammed Aquifer. And in this estimate of square miles, I've excluded all the urban areas and areas where there would be houses. And just as, just to understand what this would be, it's about 4,000, 4,500 to 5,000 flight lines. So that's what I have. And I have information here that we can provide, you know, offline. I'll provide this PowerPoint presentation and we're available to follow up with any other questions you have. Thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it. I'll stop my share.
Okay, that was really interesting. Thank you. I know Chris is very interested in this. And thank you for answering Stephanie's question in advance on your slide because we know Stephanie would be ready for that and having to ask on it. Is there any questions for Steve, Steven? You can just wave your arms. Mary?
Hi, thanks for that really interesting presentation. I have two questions. One is have any other counties approached ISGS yet to talk about doing mapping on their own? And two, would there be any ability to pursue grants, either state level or federal, to do this mapping or to cover part of the cost of this mapping?
Oh, no. We have not been approached directly by any counties. We have, we are participating with the Champaign County First Group. And I think we've been three years now as a legislative priority there, interacting with members of the General Assembly and members of Congress. And so those conversations continue to happen. And we haven't received funding through those conversations at this point. But it's possible that the continued dialogue could help leverage other funds.
Hey. Jim, I think you were next. And then Chris.
Thank you. Chris will probably have a lot of questions. Anyway, I just have a quick one. Following up with this King's question, what about the water companies also? Are they a source maybe of funding to map and find out what exactly is there in the aquifer?
So we did have a project a number of years ago that was funded by the water company. That project focused on drilling bore holes in surface geophysics. So this project would hang off from what we know from, from that. We have not approached the water company directly. One of the topics here is that this, the water resource is a regional resource across the whole area. It's, you know, it's not something that anybody, one of us owns. Everybody has a share in it. And so, you know, the, the, the boundary doesn't stop at the state line. And it would make sense to have other shareholders, so to speak, participate in that.
All right, thank you. Chris? I'm sure you have a lot, but let's try to keep things on schedule and be concise.
Sure. Mr. Brown, thank you for a very good presentation. Would, would some of this geologic information be useful for hydrologic modeling?
Yes, it would. In fact, that would be one of the, you know, one of the important applications. And I think it would answer questions that the modeling is unable to do. The modeling that we've done can only go so far. And without the 3D image, you make assumptions in a computer model where water flows, how fast it flows, what the volume is. And it would really, I would say constrain a groundwater flow model very, very well.
Thank you. And one other question, yo. That, you know, this would be available for folks like, such as the Mohammed Aquifer Council that was just recently established. Would it not?
It would. And there are a variety of ways the information can be provided. We, the first kind of data set is our GIS layers and we make those publicly available through the Illinois Geospatial Data Clearinghouse. For example, you can go and download all the data from that Lake Michigan project, including, you know, ancillary, there's movies and different things that support that. This is a springboard leaping off point for the modeling, GIS layers, planning, education. Lots of different kinds of products could be made.
So basically sustainable aquifer management.
Yes.
Mr. Zarslan, back to you.
All right, thank you, Chris. Mr. Paul, Jacob?
Presentation. So I had just a couple, couple of questions, just out of curiosity. What would be like the, the best case scenario of information found? And what would be like a, like a new information you could learn on like a worst case scenario? I know that you said you don't, you don't know what you don't know. But what are some of the indicators that you look for as this thing flies? For as far as like the health of our aquifer now and what potentially could you find?
So, you know, it's easy to speculate, but this is, this is what I would hypothetically think about, you know, in a project like this. There will be geologic layers that hold water that we don't, aren't aware of, that we haven't mapped. I know that there's areas of the geology where we've drilled a test hole and it doesn't fit what we thought we knew about it. And we have these incredible detailed data from a geologic test hole that show you all the layers, but it's miles to the next data point. And yet we can't explain why this is different than, than the next hole that's a mile or two away. And so it both would reveal new water supplies, I think, I would, that's a hypothetical. And it would tell us why we don't know some of these challenges and problems of the aquifer that just nag us, that just, that we can't answer and we don't know.
All right, thank you. Is there any other questions?
Unknown, but would this, would this helpful, be helpful in a way to mitigate some type of accident that happens in the future to understand better? Is there, is it that type of information?
Absolutely. And I would say that this could be one of the, you know, unanticipated benefits. Because, you know, you've got the 3D image of the whole aquifer. A tanker overturns on the freeway. How do you respond quickly? If you have the knowledge of this, you know where water will flow and what you have to do to protect those who could be in danger from something. So absolutely, it would be very helpful in an emergency response situation like that.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it, everyone. I'm going to sign off now.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Have a good evening. All right, moving on. Mary Ward, be ready because you're up next. The Pissodam Consolidated Drainage District, who is the rep for that here in the building? Or I'm sorry, online? If you could raise your hand, are you over in attendees? Lucas, is that yours?
Yeah.
We're having a little trouble hearing you properly. Try again, Lucas. No, we're not.
No, we're not.
Okay, Jacob, could you mute? I'm going to mute you for it. See if that helps at all. Yeah, Lucas.
I'm going to mute you for it. Yeah, Lucas.
Well, we're hearing something there, that's for sure.
Can you hear me talking now?
Yeah.
Clear there.
Yeah, that.
You got it now?
Yeah, we do. If you could, it's a little difficult, but if you could, wearing no, when you want the slides changed.
Oh, when you want the slides changed.
Okay, now we've discovered the source of the echo, Lucas, and it is you.
So thank you.
I'm gonna, Lucas, I'm gonna stop talking and I'm gonna let you try to be the only speaker.
The source of the echo, Lucas, and it is you. So I'm, Lucas, I'm gonna stop talking. I'm gonna let you try to be speaker.
Better. Okay, well, I guess we'll, I'll try and make this short and sweet to, to get rid of the echo here. Thank you guys for letting us present tonight and kind of explain what project we're looking at. Instead, I'm, I'm a new member of the Pissodam Drainage District. And this is a fairly good sized project we've been looking at for several years. And, and just, you know, don't have the fun for it. So I'll kind of go and if you could switch the slide, we'll go over an overview and then keep moving. So our overview of our project, Pissodam Drainage District is made up of over 4,000 acres in Pissodam Township. Our main tiles provide drainage to the, the west side of the village of Pissodam. Kind of like the Garden Hills, our drainage system dates back to the early 1900s and is very undersized and failing at an alarming rate. So what we're going to request here is cost share funding to replace 8,185 feet of tile that is in dire need of being replaced. If you go to the next slide, it'll be an overview of, of that tile. So outlined is essentially our drainage district. The darker lines at the bottom of that are what we're asking cost share of to replace. That would encompass that 8,185 feet of tile. Next slide. When we're looking at the impact of, of the project, you know, we feel like we can make an impact locally and globally. So we'll start with the local impact first. It's going to help ensure that the approximate 300 plus residents of the west side of Pissodam don't have to worry about flooding issues. You know, all of us are familiar with what happened up in Gibson City here recently. So we, we don't want that happening to our residents of Pissodam. By having proper drainage, we're also going to be able to improve the, the road stability and prevent our culverts from being overran and failing. We're also going to improve the safety for our community and those thriving on our, our roads. The next few slides are pictures. So this is just an overview of what Gibson City looked like not that long ago. The next one is just a more close up picture of Gibson City here recently. Next picture is that's down in our, our Pissodam Township when we had a large rain and had a lot of surface water that ran off and plugged up a, a bridge there and all the trash on top. So just an example of what can happen and some hazards that it presents. The next slide is actually a picture directly over one of the areas that we're proposing to run the tile. Obviously, the tiles that are there cannot handle the amount of water that's coming that way and basically creates a, a large stream that is overrun in the road and out into those fields there. Next slide, please. So if we, if we turn that from a local to a global impact here, globally, you know, we're, by getting the water in the ground and in tiles, we're going to help protect the health and safety of our groundwater. It also is going to help with the amount of nitrates getting in the water streams and making it down the Gulf. And then also reduce sediment, filling up our ditches, causing more drains problems. And then ultimately, all that water and, and sediments make it down in the Gulf of Mexico. If we go to the next slide, that is just a picture that shows sediment settling into the Gulf from, from streams like ours flowing down that way eventually. We go to the next slide. So overall, sort of what we're looking at is we have invested previously $120,000 in what we call sub A of Pissodam. And that is the main tile work that drains the west side of Pissodam. It had large flooding issues and we invested $120,000 to, to get the water away. Now that we have it away, these tiles are our next bottleneck to keep it from backing up. We also want to reduce the financial drain we're seeing on our resources by constantly repairing the tile. We also want to reduce the financial drain we're seeing on our resources by constantly repairing the tiles. You know, it'd give us an up to date main tile system. That would be the correct size and function properly for today's demands. You know, another large topic that is discussed a lot is the, the climate change that we're seeing. And, and those one in five hundred year storms or rain events seem to like they're coming more. In the tune of one to twenty-five year events. And so we're needing the ability to handle more frequent, more heavier storms in the system. Next slide. So in our drainage district review, drainage as utility like power, sewer, anything that is in town. So we believe that the drainage in Southern Champagne County should be looked at no different than having utilities to the landowners or residents of Pissodam. Next slide. So what, what we're here requesting is that we would like to request cost share funding for that eight thousand one hundred and eighty-five feet of tile. That needs replaced. The overall cost of our project. Is three hundred and sixty-two thousand, might as well say three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So we're here asking for half of that, which is one eighty-one, four eighty-three. And our idea is if we are able to get that funding or, or something in that line that, you know, we're prepared to go. To the courts and levy funding for the other half to get this project done. And, and a timely manner instead of waiting, you know, thirty years till we can have the funds otherwise to, to get this done. So that is all I have. I just want, you know, thank you guys for your time and consideration of this project. To help us improve our infrastructure and, and the Pissodam Consolidated Drainage District. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask and I may pull in if there are questions. I would call Hausman, he's a longtime district guy. And would probably be better able to answer the questions than myself.
Okay, and to avoid the, the problem with the echo, Lucas, I'm going to mute. Or no, I'll ask you to mute when other people are talking. That's good. That seems to work. And then go ahead and we'll queue you up when you answer. Aaron?
Okay, should be unmuted now. Thanks. Lucas, you mentioned whether you or it'd be better for Chris Hausman to answer how. You briefly mentioned it, just like a timeline, but what would a timeline be on this if you had the money? To do the whole thing and how quickly could you, do you see getting this accomplished? If, if, like I said, you had the money sitting right there in front of you to do it. Thanks. I don't know if, can, can you hear me okay now? Okay, great. Again, I'm Chris Hausman. I am a commissioner with, alongside with Lucas. To answer that, Aaron, I would say that, um, you know, we have a contractor that's lined up. That could probably start this project within, I would say, within two years. But again, uh, going through the courts and getting a levy, that, that's going to be the, the time constraint. And all of this is getting court approval for a levy for all the, the residents and landowners. So, but from a contractor standpoint, I think we could, we could be turning ground on this within two years.
Thanks, Chris. That's all I needed.
All right, and the other questions? I appreciate it. And we already have those slides. You don't need to email them to us. Uh, we'll get those to Megan and they will go into the package. Moving on then to the Urbana Champagne Sanitary District. Who would like to speak for them? And I'm going to bring Jenny Putman in later. Rick?
I am going to do a screen share here. I hope you can hear me pretty well.
We can.
And does that get the screen up?
That's a yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name is Rick Manor. I'm the executive director here at the Urbana and Champagne Sanitary District. I'll repeat the hearty thank you for you guys doing this right and listening to all our people's ideas. For what would be a useful way to spend the ARPA money. And so, uh, thanks for your time and dedication to, uh, getting this done in the appropriate way. When I heard about the ARPA funding and started to read up on it, I said, wow, this is sort of a perfect fit for UCSD. We are a local government agency and, and that's exactly what, what it's targeted for. You may not be aware that our service population, um, we cover Urbana, Champaign, Sevoy, Bonville. And another ten thousand people in unincorporated subdivisions around those communities. And so our, our ratepayers are three quarters of the residents of the county. Um, and so our ratepayers are your taxpayers and frankly, those are the people who helped pay for the ARPA funding. And so asking for some of it back is what we're doing here today. Within the ARPA language, they specifically talk about, uh, utility really, uh, billing relief. And so that's one of the specific things that, um, I'm certainly asking for. And in particular, we have a backlog of, uh, past due fund, uh, charges that are six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. In addition, they talk about water infrastructure projects, um, generically. And, um, I'm, uh, requesting that, uh, you fund a bridge replacement project. Which is actually sewer and bridge replacement project, which is for five hundred and forty thousand and we'll get to that, uh, in a bit. First, a little bit of background, um, UCSD is a, what I like to term a fee for service government utility. But, uh, we only do sewage. We're also a single purpose government agency. That's all we do is sewage. So all we do is water infrastructure. But by fee for service, I'm, uh, is something that we transitioned to in the nineteen eighties. Before that, we were on the property tax rolls exclusively. And then we transitioned to charging for our services and we got completely off the property tax rolls. And our primary source of income is user charges, the per gallon charge that all of our ratepayers pay. That provides eighty percent of our income. The second service that we provide is a little more subtle and that is we provide the service of new services being allowed to connect on. And so that's a, uh, developers benefit from that and we charge them directly and that provides about one sixth of our income. And the key fact there is, is that our current ratepayers are not charged for expanding our facilities. Developers have to pay for the impact of growth. That was a decision made back in the nineteen sixties. I think it was spot on and I'm very happy that we followed through on that. We also are run relatively conservatively. Uh, you, uh, board members appoint our board members. And, um, so I need to point out that, uh, we greatly appreciate that act. And you've appointed some very good people such that we're in pretty decent shape. You know, COVID has put a, a wrinkle in our budget and it's a problem, but we will survive one way or another. I mean, we have no option. We can't close down. But we do actually have some reserves and that's what we're relying on to get through COVID here. Back to the, the problem in our budget, um, specifically, what happened obviously back a year and a half ago was, uh, students were. Told to not come back to school. Um, and so, uh, significant number of people didn't come back to town. They obviously were not using water in town. The usage from university plummeted by about a third. Restaurants, sit-down restaurants reduced their flows by about ninety percent. Even fast food restaurants that a lot of us took in too much during COVID, they still actually had a reduced flow of about anywhere from ten to twenty percent as well. An interesting thing that was a bit surprising, how much of our workforce is actually commuter based and not in any of our service area. So when people were working from home, they were flushing at home and, uh, a lot of larger utilities saw an increase in residential flow. We did not see that increase in residential flow. So all we saw was a decline of a million dollars less in billing. From user charges. Um, in addition, uh, development fees, uh, no new projects were really proposed in the first year and a half at, uh, once COVID hit. And so about a half million dollar development fees did not come in relative to the average from the years before. And then our investments have fallen apart as well because what used to be providing a couple percent interest. Return is now down to point two or less. Um, and so combined that whole total, um, graphically here is about one point nine million dollars of income. That we did not see just during the first year of COVID and we are continuing to see some decline, um, going into the second year as well. So that's the, what I'm terming lost income. We actually have a second aspect of this, which is equally unpleasant and difficult. And that is the accumulated debt. Back in March of twenty twenty, there was a moratorium on shut offs, uh, no disconnections of water service during the, um, health emergency. And that made entire sense. And, but with that, we started to actually see an accumulation of people who were not paying their bills. And over the years, that's grown by about twenty to forty thousand dollars a month until now we're up to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars of unpaid bills. And, um, that's, um, Ms. Furtado, you were asking about what we're asking for. I'm explicitly asking for a funding of that. In that these unpaid balances are quite substantial. We, we've stopped them from growing by restarting normal collection procedures, but that is out there and hanging out there right now. The reason why we'd like it funded, I think is best illustrated by you're recognizing what happens if we don't have any funding. That is the process that we're starting, that we started with already because we have had no guarantee of funding. And so we initiated a number of these steps and in particular, we're working on the collection side. So again, um, as I said earlier, we do have some reserves. Those are taking quite a hit. Our board said, we're not going to talk about rate increases while COVID's ongoing. But at the same time, we must reassess our finances at the end of this whole mess. And so we will be looking at, if we have to do some rate increase, then we will. And so the magnitude of the rate increase will be affected by how our finances are. Uh, one of the things that's very important is we started up low income assistance programs. And I wanted to give a shout out and a big thank you to both you and your regional planning commission staff. That runs the LIHE program, the Low Income Heating Assistance Plan. It's an awesome program. You gave us, um, a great model on how to do low income assistance. We added to that model with an intergovernmental agreement called Low Income Sewer Assistance Plan. That LISAP program is ongoing and really appreciative. Lisa Benson and company are doing a great job, uh, for you and we're very happy to have partnered up with you on that. And that's going to continue. But back in August, we did start up our normal collection procedures again. That was to stop the bleeding in terms of how large that bubble of unpaid balances are. So people are now expected to pay their normal bills. Remember back at the beginning of summer, we were thinking we were getting done with COVID. And so that's why we started normal collection was to get back to normal life. But our way of attacking and, and working on that unpaid balance is that we're, we've asked, we're asking people. Or requiring people to start up payment plans. And the length of those payment plans is anywhere from a year to two years, depending on how big the balance is. Basically, we're requiring people to double pay whatever their bill is. If they right now get a fifty dollar bill, uh, every two months, we're expecting that they double pay that or do fifty dollars every month or a hundred dollars every two months. And so that's how we're going to go. But if we do that, this COVID financial situation is going to be hanging around with, uh. For us until twenty twenty-three at least. And it's difficult and hard to get work through that. These are a lot, a large number of people who can't pay their bills are low income to begin with. Uh, and so it's, it's not going to work very comfortably at all. Um, and so that's where the concept of the, the billing assistance that was in federal legislation makes a lot of sense to me. And that's why we're asking for that to give you an idea on the magnitude. Again, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars is the total of it. There are fourteen thousand ratepayers, four thousand accounts with that debt. The average, uh, per account is about a hundred and fifty dollars. The average per resident is about forty dollars a piece. And so that's the magnitude of the benefit that we're asking for. Um, I do want to point out that, um, assisting with debt relief sort of gives you a neat, neat twofer. You're paying off the bill for the low income person that can't afford the bill. But in addition to that, by getting that money to us, we're able to then use it for the other water infrastructure projects that we do. And so overall, this theme that the ARPA funding was designed around was to get returned to normal quicker. And so that's what we think this funding request accomplishes. And then I have a real, real quick one on the second project here, which is Crystal Lake Park, uh, Bridge and Interceptor. Within Crystal Lake Park, there is a bridge on the north end of, uh, of the park, uh, of the lake. This is what it looks like from the side. If you had X-ray vision, you'd notice that there is actually sewer within the deck of the bridge. If you use that X-ray vision when you're walking across it, you can notice that there's actually two sewers side by side on the bridge. And if you happen to be a structural engineer with X-ray vision, you would have been able to tell me this bridge is really in trouble, guys. Because it is. Um, it was originally built in the nineteen fifties. It was reconstructed to a good extent in the nineteen eighties. And so now it's seventy years old and it's done an awful lot of great work for us over those seventy years. But frankly, it needs to be retired and replaced. These days, bridges are not so concrete based, they're more steel based. And this is the common one in a lot of parks these days. It's a little bit more open design. This is the engineer's rendering and this shows where the pipe is going to be suspended from the deck again. Actually, again, we'll do two, two pipes side by side. The overall budget for that is about five hundred and forty thousand. And, um, basically this is a project that either we need to do on our own in the next. Two to five years, or if the ARPA funding were to come through, we would be doing it as soon as possible. And frankly, that would have a spinoff benefit in that the park district, as you're probably aware, is rehabbing the park extensively. And so our getting it done in the two-year window would, would time much better with their work. So that our project could be done while they're finishing up theirs and then the whole park would open up all at once. I'm ready for questions, although I also, um, made a promise to Darlene Pepple that I'd at least make reference to. An interesting project that I haven't seen on your agenda yet, but I think might be worth talking about. And that is Wilbur Heights, this is subdivision, um, Eastern Marketplace Mall. It really could use sanitary sewers. It will be a difficult project to undertake. And it would probably require a local champion to try and, and push this forward. But they're looking at redoing the roads. It makes a heck of a lot of sense to do sewers, which you go under the roads before you do the roads. And so this is sort of like a once every thirty-year opportunity to try and consider doing that. So I'll return to generic questions slide if you want to ask anything else.
You could stop sharing. I can see everybody better for questions. Does anyone have any questions for Rick? And you will send us those slides, correct, Rick?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Stephanie?
Yeah, just a point of clarification on the six hundred and twenty thousand dollars of basically bad debt. Are you proposing like implementing a, like a expanded LISAP program that those people could apply to? Are you just proposing you write it all off and then those bills go away from those folks? Like, could you speak a little bit about like the logistics of what you're thinking on that?
Sure. Um, so to a good extent, the logistics depends on, on what is possible and, and what funds are available. But I will say that, uh, the system that I understand has been applied by large utilities. And in particular, uh, large city utilities and, and the largest utilities that cover much of Northern Illinois. Is there is actually essentially just a straight write-off of pick a date, the debt that is here that is existing. Is just completely written off so that essentially you're basically saying, let's get past COVID. Let's eliminate this debt entirely, expect people to be current and that's how we, we get going. And so yes, the, the, the six hundred and twenty figure there would be if we were to actually do that with all of the debt. As of, uh, let's see, that was, um, August one, looking at all of that debt that had piled up during that time. I did want to make one other reference, uh, similar to our first presentation. I'm not exactly sure about everything that I can ask for. And so if that initial funding where we have documented losses of income is possible to be funded. I'd certainly be interested in talking to you about that as well. And so I'm hoping that as we work through this, we can figure out exactly what is possibly funded to. Uh, but the, it seemed to me that the two that I specifically mentioned in terms of the dollar figures, the six twenty and the five fifty. Seem to fit right in exactly what ARPA is talking about. And so that's why I was putting that specifically forward today.
All right, Mary Kane.
Hi, um, have you asked or do you know if the cities of Urbana and Champagne are at all interested in, uh, using our? Hi, um, have you asked or do you know if the cities of Urbana and Champaign are at all interested in uh, using our funds to help pay off this debt?
Um, if we've, we've talked about it that they are participants in the LISAAP program to the extent that, that there is um, uh, there, we bill for the cities, um, stormwater uh, fees and sewer maintenance fees. And in Urbana's case, also the recycling uh, fee. And so to the extent that our bill is a conglomerate of those things, they are already participating in the LISAAP, the Low Income Sewer Assistance Plan. And so they have done that. And then I advise them about the idea of perhaps writing off larger amounts of debt. And um, I was frankly telling them, look, you guys probably need to consider doing this for your portion of your debt. And I'm frankly asking for you to consider it for our debt. And so yes, we could do some form of a shared thing where they're also involved in. Again, that's one of the details that I'm not sure how much of that is fundable and how much is not. And so um, those numbers would be subject to change if there was different participation.
Okay, thank you. Jim McGuire.
Thank you. I kind of have the same question. Um, with the cities. How much LISAAP uh, money is available to pay these and um, bills?
So uh, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I think I can, right. Uh, so uh, LISAAP has um, and, and the lie heat program itself also have specific income requirements of a percent of um, of uh, the poverty li- income. And so those restrictions cut off some people's availability that um, and so we are directing anybody who contacts us with any in, any back billing. Do contact regional planning. And so we're directing and as many people as possible into LISAAP because it is there and already available. Um, uh, however, that has more been in the hundreds, the tens and the hundreds of people and accounts that have been involved, and we have fourteen hundred accounts that are behind. Um, and so it doesn't seem that so many people are fitting into that LISAAP mode. Um, it could be that more will get involved, but I'm not anticipating that it would take away all of that. But again, to the extent that it does, we will adjust the numbers that we're talking about here. And so LISAAP does, we will, we have been maintaining it, and we do intend to maintain this going forward. That's sort of our initial buy-in, that we're definitely doing that throughout COVID. Um, and then one other aspect that LISAAP is uh, also a little bit more convoluted in that it is open to owner operators, uh, homeowners and doesn't work so well in regards to tenants. And in a number of instances, this back accumulated debt is tenants or landlords that have mixed responsibility. And so they, there, there is certainly a pool of people that have debt that are not LISAAP eligible. And so that's why we're doing this request while we're still continuing with LISAAP. I hope that makes sense.
Uh, yeah, it does. Um, except that you're saying that the majority of the people uh, don't meet the income requirements, but you want, want us to pay for them to pay their bills, um, which means they should have had the funds to pay the bill in the first place. We're just not requiring them to do that.
To the extent that that's documentable and the limits um, is two hundred percent of the poverty limit is I understand what the current limits are. Um, and so uh, yes, it is with those restrictions. And so we are talking about people above that level. And again, the, those that, I'll just leave it at that, that's right.
Right. So people that may be low income that paid their bill um, wouldn't be, you know, wouldn't be part of this program and have their bills paid. But someone who makes more than the two hundred percent would have theirs paid. Um, and then on to the park district and the bridge. Uh, have you talked to them about rebuilding the bridge?
Um, yes.
And Urbana.
Uh, so yes, uh, at the same time, it is our asset, our sewer. Um, and so we've always known that we, we both need to maintain it and we need to pay for the replacement. So we are in constant conversation with them in regards to design features. Um, for example, uh, some of the things that were already done in that air, in that picture uh, there are because we're talking with them because we wanted to fit in with the park. Um, but in terms of funding it, um, it turns, they did not have money and have not been, uh, do not have money set aside for this. They're doing their work on their assets. This is one that we really could not ask them for the funding on. And as a side note, um, I just heard earlier in the week, they were, that park districts in general were left out of any LISAAP. Or I'm sorry, any ARPA specific reference. And so um, I'm pretty sure they would not be able to be funding it at all.
Okay, we got, it looks like Chris Dore, one more question, maybe from Chris.
All right, thank you. I just, uh, I'd like to uh, kind of speak to the issue of the bridge at Crystal Lake Park. Uh, you know, part of the reason, you know, that this is not a uh, necessarily a pedestrian bridge. It's more uh, security and protection of the pipes and uh, kind of to keep people from jumping up and down on the pipes perhaps, or trying to drive a uh, four wheeler over it, something like that. Uh, so it's, it, it's, it, it shouldn't get confused that way. But uh, I, 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 I kind of say that these two projects are exactly what ARPA is intending, intended for. Uh, uh, very specifically, negative impacts caused uh, by the public health uh, emergency and lost public service, public sector revenue. And uh, so I, I think uh, that, that this project, you know, fits neatly into that. Back to you, Eric.
All right. Thank you, Chris. All right. Seeing no more questions for Rick. Rick, thank you. And uh, don't forget to send those things in. Uh, we have the Village of Ludlow Sewer Connection Project, and I don't know that I see anyone in panelists. Is there an attendee who's going to speak on that? If so, could you raise your hand? Uh, oh, wait a minute. Jennifer is back. I was, I promised Jennifer Putman as a member of the uh, board uh, with Rick there, that she would have a moment to speak. Uh, Jennifer, I'm asking you to unmute.
Okay, so can you hear Jenny Putman?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and you, you can't see me and you don't need to see me, right?
Uh, that's true.
All right, excellent. Uh, county board members, thank you for this third night of study session material. Um, you have given me and anyone following y- your work, and that's a lot of people. This is what good government looks like. Thank you for the study sessions on August thirtieth and thirty first. Heart wrenching as they were, and thank you for tonight's study session. Um, our staff are working as hard as people can. And I know that probably all, no matter what business the twenty-two county board members are in, you are working hard too. COVID has been a monster. And our staff are meeting that monster. The phone rings off the hook from customers who need help paying their bills. It's not, it's not just people calling for help with their bills that makes our workforce qualify as hardest working. They do the odious jobs that almost no one wants to do. They deal with our stuff when we flush the toilet, not just the one time that we flush the toilet once an hour or so. But twelve months a year in the worst weather, sometimes the weather is good. But we, we are, we are a non-stop workforce, and we've got to be paid. Our staff have got to be paid. The, when, when something breaks at the sanitary district, at the, at the treatment plants, it costs a lot of money to repair it. We've, we've got to keep our infrastructure functioning well because the work that we do is essential to public health. You don't have civilization if you can't treat your wastewater efficiently and modernly. And regarding the uh, how people have fallen, fallen into back with, be behind in their being able to pay their bills. They should have been able to pay their bills. They, they should have had the funds, as Mr. McGuire pointed out. And the workplaces should have stayed open. If only their kids had been able to go to school or if only daycare had been available. But this thing has been a monster for everyone. It's presented challenges for everyone. And people have fallen in arrears. We have not used the enforcement mechanism that we are loathe to use. There's carrots and there's sticks, you know, and getting people who are behind in their payments to pay. And we are, the enforcement mechanism available to sanitary districts is the disconnection. Uh, our customers receive letters saying you've got to pay soon or we'll have to disconnect the water service. They get follow-up letters. They receive phone calls. And then a sign is posted on their door informing the homeowners that their water service will be disconnected. We hate to do that. No one wants to do that. It's, it's a stupid, awful way. But without receiving income, we, we can't provide the essential public service, the public health necessity that we provide. And we're, we're in that spot now that we're unable to continue to provide the high, high level of service that the people of the sanitary district territory deserve wi- without an infusion to help us out of this awful monstrous challenge that, that we're, that everyone is facing. I, it's, it's, it's a crucial uh, situation. And I'm very grateful that the American Rescue Plan exists to help uh, hardworking women and men like those who work for the sanitary district continue to do their work. It's an honor to be associated with these hardest working people in all of Champaign County. Other than the farmers, maybe I gotta say, farmers work hard too, but do they deal with the stuff that we flush down the toilet? I, I'm just, I'm, I'm in awe of, of the workers at, at the sanitary district. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Jenny. Um, always kind words from you, Jenny. I'm gonna deviate just real quick from the agenda. Uh, Dave Wolken is here. Dave Wolken sent some emails to Darlene, and he's the person, uh, they came in person. Uh, and they want to talk just briefly about the drainage district that they're responsible for. And maybe some things we can help. Dave, are you familiar with how to run that? If uh, I'm gonna let you unmute and uh, let you speak, and I'm gonna mute so we don't have an echo. And this is Dave Wolken again.
Eric, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Good.
Dave, are you familiar with how to run that? Uh, I'm gonna let you unmute.
Okay, Dave, go ahead.
Uh, do you have the pictures I sent? Can you?
I don't have a way to share them right now, but they will be in the packet of information that goes out after this meeting.
Okay, well, we have flooding issues at Triple Fork uh, with the uh, long box culvert on the Old Shnew Air Force Base that we want to remove to uh, solve our flooding problems along Route forty-five, basically around Corky's and Fountain Valley area. We want to uh, take that culvert out. I uh, I have some pictures, but I can't get them up right now, but we want to use some of that money that the, the federal government has available for projects like this.
Do you know an amount, Dave, that you think you're looking at?
Uh, we're getting uh, we're studying, getting bids. The uh, the approximate cost would be uh, should I tell them the cost? Would, would be uh, in the neighborhood of sixty thousand, more or less.
I'd like you to do that. It'd be helpful since we can't get your pictures up now, but we will put them in the packet. Is if you could send some more information to Darlene by email, and we'll get that all put together uh, in the packet. So the board members will be able to s- look at that uh, when we distribute all the information from tonight's meeting.
The culvert I'm talking about is approximately seven hundred feet long. It was a, it was built on the Air Force Base in case they wanted to extend a runway. Uh, that would be going over the, our drainage ditch is basically what it is. And it's uh, it's holding back the water and it's causing flooding problem. It gets debris in it because it's so long and uh, and we've had a lot of flooding problems along uh, for, around forty-five because of it.
All right. Uh, is there any questions for Dave while he's here? Uh, they, they would like to get going. Uh, and I thank you for coming down here uh, tonight and uh,
You're welcome.
Don't see anybody with their hand up. Stephanie, are you waving?
Yeah, just real quick, Dave, do you need the full dollar amount or, or does the drainage district have any money to put towards this? Or you asking for the county that, for the, the full thing?
Uh, we is one, they, we don't know, the district don't have enough money for this, for this project. We're still wanting to use some of the federal money that may be available for projects like this.
All right. Thank, thank you. Thank you.
Hmm.
All right. Again, thank you uh, for coming down. Uh, wait, Chris, you've got a question?
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, David, I, I know that uh, the, is, is, is the road go over this?
Yes, there is a road. Yes, there is a road goes over, yes.
Okay, I, I think that there's some funds coming to the highway department. You might just call Jeff Blue. I don't know. Lorraine, can you weigh in on that?
We've had uh, John Cooper from Jeff Blue's office out there.
Okay.
Well, he knows about it.
All right.
Yeah.
Diane?
Sorry, I kept clicking it and it didn't go up. Um, real quick, um, one of the things uh, with the uh, highway department or motor fuel fund or whatever, that does help uh, the district, it's usually fifty fifty. And I think what David is saying also is that they probably don't have the other fifty percent to put in. So maybe that's where, um, you know, the highway motor fuel or something, and then maybe some of this ARPA fund would take up the other half if the um, campaign doesn't happen. And so I think that might be where you're coming from, David. Not sure.
Uh, if Mrs. Kulpel is uh, listening, she might be able to help. I don't know.
Yeah, she's not on the call tonight, but the, these are things we can talk about uh, as we go into our budget discussions. So again, any information that you have and the people you've talked to, if you throw that in an email, we'll get that in the packet.
Okay, well, I, we're, we're studying, we're still getting bids on the cost to remove the culvert and uh, leave the culvert uh, where the road is for a bridge at the, in the meantime, see if it's gonna relieve some of the flooding issues just by doing that.
Right. Oh, Darlene is here.
Yeah, I am here. So I will say that yes, we have not investigated yet whether uh, highway could pay potentially for the bridge part of this, or whether even a bridge would be needed. And um, the part that he's talking about is the culvert alongside the road. So that probably would not be highway money that would be able to pay for that.
All right. Thank you, Darlene. All right. Any other questions? I think when we get more details on this, it'll be more helpful. All right. Thank you again, both of you for coming down. I'm gonna mute you from here. Uh, and uh, have a good evening. Appreciate it. All right. Do we have someone here from the Village of Ludlow? That's our next agenda item that wants to speak.
Eric, I, I think with um, Steve being out um, at work tonight, I don't think there was anybody else that was going to be coming. I, I fully, I know that he fully intended to be at the meeting tonight, and it just worked out that he had to be at work.
Okay, uh, again, uh, if they can send anything to Darlene, Darlene may- Okay, again, if they can send anything to Darlene, Darlene, maybe you
I can speak to this. I think that Ludlow did send a letter to the board way back at the very beginning when the ARPA money became available. And their project that I think they want to do is that the the, they're having difficulty also with Drainage of their septic systems now. The septic systems are not working well anymore and it's a small community. What they would like to do is to attach to the sewer system of the neighboring town, which I think is Rantoul. I think that's the closest one. But they they have to extend their pipes quite a ways. And so they're they're just with a small, being a small community, they don't have the money to be able to do that. And they're hoping to be able to obtain some ARPA funds to supplement what they're able to put in. I don't have an actual cost. I'm not sure they've actually had it bid yet.
Can we extract that part from that early correspondence and put it into the packet that would be the summary of this evening's stuff, darling?
Yeah, we can re, we can reattach that letter, yeah.
That would be great, thank you. And then if we get any more information, then certainly add it to it. Alright, with that, let's move on to the village of Thomasboro. I believe that Mr. Evans is here. I recognize the name from television. Mr. Evans. I can hear you. Yep.
Okay, I just want to, first of all, I wanted to thank you guys for taking the time out, not just to hear me, but to be inclusive on this. I think I think it's just exempl, it's just a great, it's just awesome that you guys are doing that. I appreciate that. And Darlene has been extremely helpful for us. So on this, and I just wanted to say thank you to Darlene also. Our projects, we have two, we have some storm, storm drainage problems that in town. We have two major projects that are, that are causing flooding issues. One is on the west side of town. We have two streets that were installed in the early seventies and they are life sa, kind of a life safety issue for us. Six to eight times a year, we'll have two, one road in particular. That will get, much like Gibson City's pictures that we just saw earlier, six to eight times a year, we'll have water standing. Two foot of water standing on the road, anywhere from two days, sometimes upwards of eight or nine days. We have to pump water from that street to another street to 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 get rid of some of that water. So it's it's been an ongoing issue. So we, that's one of our, that's one of our problems. And then on the east side of town, we have our main trunk line that was installed in the early, early twenties. And the the neighborhoods on the east side of town, those last updates were done in the WPA day. So it dates back to, you know, post World War Two, so the forties. So we get flooding often during any, during any of those rains. So right now, we have a plan. Our plan is to get a bunch of these lines jetted, so we're working with a clay tile on the east side of town. So we want to, we're jetting these lines. That's already scheduled. So we're starting that part of it, so we can then scope and inspect the lines for any type of repair. We, the flooding issues have been ongoing even, even since those roads were even installed. So repairing, just repairing the lines isn't gonna solve the problem. We have, so those are two projects that that we're looking at. So we have some budget numbers on everything and We expect between the bedding and the scoping, a new storm line. One new storm line on the west side of town and and a new, new storm line on the east side of town. We're looking, our preliminary budget numbers are around four hundred and fifty thousand. So I didn't come here with any asking type numbers. I just wanted to, you know, opportunity to speak to you guys, obviously, but Right now, we have a hundred and fifty of, we put a hundred and fifty of the ARPA money towards it. We talked at the, some of our board meetings, we we do have some on the general fund to throw at this. So we, I know we hope, the boards talked at least fifty thousand towards it, so we're around a quarter, around a quarter million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Is where we're at right now and we're just looking for some, you know, beggars can't be choosers, you know, we're So, but we're just, we're just looking for any help we can get. I will include these numbers. I'll have an email typed up with some of the budget numbers. As we get the lines scoped and inspected. We'll have some, you know, a little bit harder numbers to 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 present, but that's what we're working with right now. That's all I've really got for you guys. Open to any questions.
Alright, and again, if you can, it's sort of an introductory summary sort of document that you could email to Darlene and Megan. And that would get into this. And then if you get further stuff later on, please do pass that to us. Any questions for Mr. Evans while he's here? Okay, seeing none. We're gonna move on.
If I may, real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, real quick, to open up to the board and to Steve Thomas, who obviously isn't here. The village of Thomasboro is tied in with Randool also. So if you guys ever have future discussion of that. We would be more than happy to help with any questions that may come along with that. So, you know, any preliminary discussion, by all means, feel free to reach out. We'd be more than happy to share with you. You know, any knowledge that we have on it, so.
Thank you, Mary King.
Tied in with Randool, how?
Our, our sewer goes to Randool. So when, much like the Wilbur Heights is now, you know, we had to do that almost twenty years ago now. When the EPA made some law for some changes, we had to get rid of all of the leach fields and things like that. Tie in the sewer and we ran a line all the way to Randool. So right now, we produce our own water for, and We pay Randool a fee for every thousand gallons of sanitary that goes there.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, moving on. We saved the Champaign County facilities for last. Dana is on the call. And we're gonna let Dana go first. There was a couple of things we had. One is the lovely parking lot that we all park on and Dana, the floor is yours. Do you have something to present?
Okay, and I apologize, this is gonna be verbal. I will get you something. A little neater and, and clear, paints a clearer picture, so. We've got actually ten projects upcoming in the next seven years that are all on our approved Capital Asset Plan. A couple of big ones, Brookins has three parking lots. That need to be replaced in the very near future. They're, they're crumbling badly. We also need to take care of a water problem with those parking lots. No Proper runoff was ever created for those lots and as you know, they're fairly good size. That project is slated for about six hundred and eighty thousand and year twenty twenty seven. At least on the capital plan. I know that Eric had mentioned Trying to maybe put in some permeable pavers similar to what MTD had done back in two thousand and ten. MTD's lot is about seventy thousand square feet. The two lots just on the north side alone here for Brookings is about eighty six thousand square feet. MTD's project was just slightly over five hundred thousand dollars back in two thousand and ten. And if you apply modern, today's figures or even next year's figures. You're probably two or three times that. You're looking at about a million and a half or, you know, just the two lots on the north side. If you wanted to put in permeable pavers of some sort. There's also, you know, it's a, it's a major drive. It's our only drive and drop off for large vehicles. So we'd have to do the drive all the way up to the back doors by Putman. In probably six to eight inches of concrete, allowing for, you know, proper weight distribution so that those vehicles don't break up. What we've done to the lots. All the lots that we have will need attention over the next seven years. The best lot we have is at the courthouse, which is, which is fairly good size too, but even in twenty twenty eight, we're gonna have to come back and And at least put a topper coat on it. Annually, we'll, we inspect all of our lots. We fill as many cracks as we can. It's almost impossible here at Brookings because you can't walk for about, you know, one step and not hit about six cracks. When it rains, you can see the water actually moving through and underneath Our pavers here, so it's, it is a problem, needs to be addressed. Total, we're looking at about two point four million over those next seven years for just parking lots. It does not include creating any water runoff area in terms of Water shed areas, rain gardens, if you will. That would have to be looked at. We have not done anything with With determining those types of costs. We've solely focused on, you know, repair, replace both curbing and parking Surface. Another large component is art martel over the next seven years. You know, back a couple of years ago, we put in sidewalk as we prepared for the sale of the nursing home. It was mandated by the city of Urbana that we put in a sidewalk that addressed basically pedestrian traffic To and from the major thoroughfares. East Main Street and Lyman, allowing access both to our facilities as well as the nursing home. We have not put in curbing yet for either side of the street, gutters or drainage. That will have to be done in the future. Again, more water rain off runoff, excuse me. Will have to be addressed at that time, you know, where do we take it? If there's an expansion, parking lots at the satellite jail will have the same issue. So there's a lot to be studied, but we've got hard fixed costs coming up over the next six, seven years for parking lots.
Alright, very good. Thank you Dana, and we look forward to that sort of in a form that we can distribute. I'm gonna ask Stephanie to sort of briefly summarize, and you knew this was coming, so I hope you're ready for it. John Burge, Stephanie and I looked into some grant funding that was a project with matching money. There's a lot of grant money out there for things like this, but at the time, it was the beginning of COVID and it seemed like a very bad time to ask the county to match. We have this lovely little pot of money that has come our way with the ARPA. So Stephanie, if you want to kind of just give a quick overview of what we thought about doing and how it could maybe help make a better parking lot And water control.
Sure. So there's a pot of money called the Green Infrastructure Grant Opportunity Money. It's state money run from, through the Illinois EPA. So I refer to it from here on out as GEIGO. So the GEIGO money is available for projects through twenty twenty five. They are giving away five million dollars a year for between two to ten projects. No project could be more than half the money. So our project to build the, if if Dana's right and Our permeable parking lot would cost triple the MTD's, that would still be within the range, the grant, like very within the grant range. And depending on the economic, the census track economics of the area. It would either be, the state would pay seventy five or eighty five percent of the fund, of the project. So depending on if it's economically challenged, it's eighty five percent, if not it's seventy five percent. What's great about it is that that is funded from the Build Illinois Bond Fund. So it is state money. And so one of the things I think that's important to remember with ARPA money Is you cannot use ARPA money to match a federal grant, at least right now within the rules. So you can't match ARPA to a different federal funding source. But since this is a state funding source, we could use it, right? So if we wanted to bump up that parking lot project, and you know, and As long, we would have to vet it and make sure that it's eligible, you know, under the the water category. And I think maybe if we do some of the these things like Dana was talking about, it had some of the rain garden features and stuff that can also help sell it a little bit, but It's something to throw out there, you know, I mean, it's something to take a pretty big project that we've got sitting on our books that's, you know, out there. And I will say this, the the grants are due in spring. So if if that is something we're interested in. It it's something that we would need to decide so that we'd have enough time to put the, it's a hugely. I mean, we were halfway done to write the grant before we decided to pull the plug on it last time. So it's not a huge lift to do the grant, but we would probably want to decide earlier than than later. And so again, it would just be the matching cost that we would have to do, so. And it's out there, you know, and and also If the GEIGO grant might be something that we could look at for Some of these other water projects. I mean, it's just something to keep in mind. It's basically doing environmental infrastructure. There's a lot of different categories. Permeable parking lots are one, rain gardens are one. I had a really interesting conversation with the Farm Bureau and they're gonna send in some stuff about Ground cover crops and a project to educate about that. That might be something that, you know, there's, there's, I think there's a lot of cool stuff we could do with that. And maybe I think if we could get ourselves on their, their friendly list, it's, you know, maybe something we could apply to more than once, so. And there's different categories of of grants in that pot. So that's just something to keep in mind and it's one of the the pots of money that I've seen That we can match with this ARPA money. And I think one of our goals should be to figure out how we could leverage, right? This ARPA money to get more money. Because forty million's a lot, but as we've discovered, it's not enough to do everything we want to do.
Alright, thank you Stephanie. Yeah, that's exactly something that I think we, we leave nothing on the table because we don't have money to match. And this is an opportunity to pay twenty five percent of what we're looking at doing and getting state money to pay A lot more of it. Is there any questions for Dana? From the board members? Alright, I don't see any, which means that we were moderately successful. If you discount the first two minutes we spent with technology.
Was Ms. Monty going to?
Oh, wait, I've got some questions, yeah. Oh, that's right. Yeah, let's
Presentation here, thank you.
Very sorry Susan, first I put you in too early and then I put you out. Go ahead and share your screen and
Alright, can you see that?
Yes, we can.
I'll start, thank you. Alright, so, yeah, it's Susan and I wanted to start off by Answering the question, how is HHW a water infrastructure request? And so because that may have crossed your mind and this just lays out the logic and why it's an eligible kind of project. So it, it does address a source of non-point source pollution, namely household hazardous waste from many households. Only capital costs would be eligible under this loan program and and that's as explained in the interim final rule. So I just wanted to lay out some of that rationale for why this request is here. Very excited that this could be an eligible project. So the request itself is for capital costs, which are eligible For a household hazardous waste collection facility to to be developed at a central Champaign County location. And it's a two-part request. First, in the year twenty twenty two, we would be requesting four hundred and seventy two thousand, one hundred and ten dollars To complete the planning, design, permitting and land acquisition portion of the project. And then in the year twenty twenty four, the larger amount of two million, five hundred and eighty three And six hundred and seventy dollars to complete actual construction targeted to commence in twenty twenty four and be completed within that year. So this slide, which you can review later, I provide a larger copy in the handout, so you don't have to strain yourself to to read this. Is, it's a project cost estimate of a five thousand square foot optimal Household hazardous waste collection facility with line item details that you can review. In February earlier this year, the nonprofit organization Champaign County Environmental Stewards With support received from the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District, City of Urbana And the Champaign County Solid Waste Fund commissioned a feasibility study to obtain updated data And project cost estimates for a household hazardous waste collection facility in Champaign County. To obtain updated data and project cost estimates for a household hazardous waste collection facility in Champagne County. The feasibility study is on target to be completed this September. So these are, uh, this is an excerpt from that study. So, uh, the project cost estimates that were shown there in slide, the previous slide, I should back up. Are for the five thousand square foot optimal HHW collection facility. We had explored a minimalist type of facility as a, if one plan. And, and these costs are based on recent wood and steel price increases related to the pandemic, which can be significant. So, um, the increased costs are reflected here. So these next slides provide an overview of all estimated costs. To develop, construct and operate an HHW collection facility in Champagne County. Starting with the amount being requested for the upfront capital costs of this proposed facility already briefly mentioned. The annual cost to operate an HHW collection facility in Champagne County are estimated at one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This operating cost would allow for an HHW collection facility to be opened bi-weekly on a part-time basis year round. Approximately ten to fifteen hours in total each month. So the current strategy will be to seek to share this cost among local governments. The county municipalities and townships via an intergovernmental agreement. This is how many places, uh, uh, in, in northern part of our state, the four places do operate their facilities. This fall, volunteers from the nonprofit Champagne County Environmental Stewards continue their HHW collection awareness initiative. With plans to meet individually with all local government officials in Champagne County. No small task to lay the groundwork for, uh, our cost share agreement to meet this annual operating cost. This IA commitment is critical to the success of the project. And will take the place of all resources and staff hours currently provided by local governments. To hold the annual one-day, um, I EPA sponsored collection event. Sue, let's see, move this thing forward. Well, the good news is that the, um, Illinois EPA will enter an agreement with Champagne County. To complete, completely cover annual costs to transport and process the HHW that is collected at the HHW facility. An amount estimated at approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars each year. So this is, the slide contains a list of reasons why we need an HHW collection facility. All documented as public safety challenges over the years. Um, it's an interesting list. You can read it. Uh, includes exposure to hazardous substances that can be harmful to people and equipment. Is just a, a bad scene. So HHW is toxic corrosive, uh, flammable. And there's another descriptor that I'm forgetting, but it's awful stuff. So, uh, two reasons, uh, that especially stand out. Second, my notes, I don't even have to think. Um, as strong support for developing an HHW collection facility here in Champagne County are. On the Mohammed Aquifer Task Force report in twenty eighteen, which identified. That inadequate or improper HHW management is a contamination threat, one of six contamination threats to the Mohammed Aquifer. Any hazardous chemical constituents, including HHW that are, that is either placed or dumped on the ground or in a recharge area. Can potentially contaminate the aquifer and improving the management and collection of HHW collection in the region. Is an investment in maintaining the quality of the Mohammed Aquifer. So, um, finally, unless an HHW collection option is both convenient and accessible. That collection option will not effectively be utilized by residents. This maximum is well-known among collection professionals. And backed up by a number of studies. Having an HHW collection facility will increase the convenience of collection options from once a year to at least twenty-five. Excuse me, to at least twenty-four times a year, twice monthly. Sixty percent of five hundred and twenty-seven total respondents to the recent online and continuing online. HHW collection survey, uh, indicate that they prefer a collection facility that is open part-time and year-round. To a once a year collection option. So I want to just end by mentioning, again, this is our request. And this is the timeline, um, mentioned earlier, the initial request and then the subsequent request. And I want to also note that. We're third guard to other potential state grants for an HHW capital cost to cover those costs. These are extremely very rare. And I, last year in twenty twenty was shocked. To see a, a line in the Build Illinois Grant Opportunity that could possibly allow for this. That's why we. Got together and, and got this feasibility study so we could be in a position to apply should that occur again, that kind of a grant opportunity for capital cost. And I was saddened this year to see that the Build Illinois, uh, grants or limited transportation, uh, priorities. So that's, that's typically the case. We're really very rarely see any kind of grant support for capital costs for an HHW collection facility. All right. I'll end there. Thank you very much. Um, I welcome your questions and that's it for now.
All right. Thank you, Susan. If you want to stop your share, we can see who's got a hand up. Chris?
Thank you. Ms. Monte, thank you for, uh, bringing that, uh, to the, to the meeting. We had, I think, you know, a lot of participation in the I EPA collections. In fact, I was there and I, I thought they were very well handled, but it was very busy. We'd have, also had electronic collections. Do, do you have any idea, uh, any numbers about how many participants, items, tonnage?
Yeah, we have all that information. Uh, this facility could supplant those, that three times a year collections. That cycle that we currently do here in Champagne County. This facility was a plant, all of that. It would have sufficient space. To store indoor storage for, um, e-waste collected. Uh, at a much more convenient fashion than a, uh, twice yearly collection at the Parkland College Parking Lot. So this would be, um, a wonderful facility to have. It's a great opportunity. The timing is awesome. We were facing, uh, the prospects of a capital development campaign, um, in the next few years. So this is just incredible opportunity here for this to happen.
Were, were people turned away from some of these other collections?
Well, since we instituted the online registration, we have paced the, uh, line of cars. Uh, sufficiently, and we do manage to schedule everyone that's interested. It's just that people call year-round with, with calls. What do I do with this? What do I do with that? People move from point A to B year-round and they have to get rid of stuff in their garage, uh, year-round. We get calls from realtors, what can we do? It, it's just not the most efficient way to handle this type of waste. So it's much more efficient to have a facility that's not located two and a half hours away, like they are. Closest one is in Naperville presently. So, yeah, this is just, uh, the way to go.
Thank you.
Uh, Jenny Loskin.
Um, hi Susan. Thank you for that presentation. I just, uh, was curious, like, you just said the closest facility right now is in Naperville. Is there any potential for buy-in and support from surrounding counties? From Champagne County to maintain a facility, like, or to even contribute towards building one that would be closer for them?
Yeah, um, that would certainly be a strategy to pursue additionally. Because within forty miles is the ideal zone. We have maps of all the households that would potentially really benefit from this. And, um, yeah, forty mile radius from central Champagne County. We could ask all of those counties to contribute. But, uh, we, we do have to take a leadership role. It's never gonna happen. Uh, it's very unlikely that any unit of government would be interested in establishing a facility that would serve the region. So we, we are in a leadership capacity here as, as the county solid waste authority to, to push this forward.
Mr. Store.
Thank you. Uh, would this be made, would this be run by the county or the environmental stewards or? Who would, who would run those?
That has not been determined. Uh, it can be either way. In McLean County, they have a nonprofit do their operations and collections and things called the Ecology Action Center. Uh, other counties, um, operate it by hiring a contractor to do the collections. And it's a relatively streamlined kind of process, once it's established.
Very good. Any other questions for Susan?
Thank you.
It seems like we saved one of the more interesting things for last. And again, I apologize for first surprising you and then forgetting you. With that, I want to thank everybody who participated, uh, in tonight's presentations. Uh, I want to thank the two gentlemen who've left us now, who came in person. Uh, I want to thank all the board members who came in, uh, to talk. And always thank Jennifer Putman for her kind words for all the toil that we do. Jenny is a gem. Uh, so unless there's anything else, uh, it is eight eighteen. And we did fairly well. And I look forward to the information, uh, to come in the packet. Uh, and anyone who presented, make sure you get that to, uh, Megan. And that's M R O B I S O N at C O dot champagne dot Illinois. That's Megan's email or send it to Darlene. Uh, we will get it all put together, uh, and it will get to all the board members. So, thank you all. Thank you very much. Uh, I say goodnight to an empty boardroom. It's quite a thing to see. And, uh, everyone have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Great job, Eric.
Thank you, Stephanie. Take care. Thank you for your input.